Hello everyone, good afternoon and happy election day. Welcome to this Student in the Workplace virtual connection. If you are joining us again after several sessions, we welcome you back and thank you for joining us. Today, we have Meadville City Council member Autumn Vogel. So kind of sticking with the theme, when we reached out to her to pick a date, she said election day might be fun and I think she was right. She's going to tell us all about her role and her responsibilities and what she does in that position. And so if you have questions for Autumn, logistically what you're looking for, for most of you, it'll be in the upper right-hand corner. It is a chat box with a question mark in it. If you click on that, it'll bring up a box for our live Q and A. You can submit a question at any point throughout our conversation and I will make sure that we ask it of Autumn. We'll probably get to it in the back half for the last 10 or 15 minutes. So feel free to submit questions at any time. But without further ado, Autumn, I'm going to send you live.
Great, thanks, Zan.
You're welcome. Well, welcome, Autumn. Thank you for spending a half hour out of your day with us today. Why don't you start and just tell us a little bit about your position, your role? What does being a city councilman mean?
Sure, thanks so much and thank you for having me. Zan mentioned my name's Autumn Vogel and I serve on city council in Meadville, Pennsylvania. So we're the county seat of Crawford County, a city of 13,000. And those 13,000 residents get to elect five city council members, includes our mayor. And together, we decide, we make decisions for the city. So we decide, as we're doing right now, we decide on the city's budget, which kind of sets a plan for the next year of what services we'll offer and how we'll fund them. And that's really the way that we can set priorities in the city. We also can make resolutions to pass a new ordinance, which is like a local law that we can honor in the city, to set policies. And really, I do it as my job as a city councilperson to make it easier for people to get involved in local government, to get involved in local decision-making, especially on matters that impact folks directly, that impact our citizens, the citizens of Meadville, directly in their everyday. And so for me, city council, it's different. So elected official positions are different in lots of places. For instance, the Crawford County Commissioners, that's their job. They're elected, there's three of them, and they're elected to serve as a commissioner. It's considered part-time, but they make full-time salaries. So most of them just will just do that. City council, we don't really get paid at all so very much. So it's mostly volunteer. It's compensated a little bit, but we have to meet. We have formal meetings twice a month and there's lots of prep work to get ready for that. There's lots of documents we've got to read and people we have to talk to before we can make decisions at those meetings. So there's a lot of time and energy and work that goes in to this largely volunteer position. But there are lots of versions of public service that are kind of full-time work.
Awesome, thank you. So let's delve into a little bit more specifically. What are some of the, when you think about like essential skills or soft skills, things that make you successful at your position that maybe anybody could have? You know, they might not be technology skills or those hard skills, but what are those soft skills that you feel like, and we could even go with like work in public service, somebody would need?
Sure, sure. So I think that it's really important to be able to talk to people and hear from people. So you know, in any kind of public service job, whether that's something like city council or working in the city building as city staff, maybe being a police officer or fighter, fighter, you're offering a public good. And so the folks that hold you accountable, the folks that you know you're serving are the everyday folks in your community, it's your neighbors, it's the people that you well, don't go to school with at the time, but you know, but you maybe know and see in the grocery store or whatever it is. And so being able to relate to people, to understand maybe where someone is coming from, being able to understand maybe what they need and talk to them about what they need and hear, you know, how you can either meet those needs through the service that you provide or meet those needs through the kind of decisions that you're able to make as a public servant. And so certainly, talking to people and hearing from folks, also being able to really work with other people. So I mentioned that I am one of five, which includes the mayor. So I'm one of five members of Meadville City Council and none of us, including the mayor, none of us has authority on our own. So none of us can say, okay, this is going to be a new law now. On Fridays, we're all going to wear yellow, everyone in town, and you have to because I say so, right? We can't do that. We have to craft a resolution. It has to go in front of the council. A lot of work goes into it beforehand among staff, maybe among residents to see, is this what you want? Is this what's going to meet that need that you have, this need to wear yellow or whatever it is? And then we have to pass it together. It has to go, it has to be put to a vote. So all of the work that leads up to the decisions that we make and then even implementing those decisions too. So after the decision's made, we have to work together on that at every step of the way. And so it's sometimes it's working with people that you might not choose to be working with or that might not share your same views or your same ideas for how to implement something or make change or make something better. But you have to be able to work through that and that's a challenge that I face. But it's, I'm working on it for sure, is being able to work alongside other folks that are not the same as me in lots of ways to try and make our community better. So teamwork, I think being able to listen to people, being empathetic and understanding how people are feeling and what their needs are. And yeah, I think, and I'll add too, I think that there's a, for public servants, right? You're meeting needs that people have and that they identify. And so we have to, it's a learned skill, a soft skill for sure, to learn kind of how to walk a line between trying things that are new and maybe taking some risks and being able to be brave and implement new things. But then also being responsible, right? You're responsible, as a public servant, you know, as an elected official, I'm responsible to the 13,000 people that live in this town. And so the decisions that I make, right, like that I make with other people, you know, with the rest of council, you know, has real impact on people's lives. And so you really got to treat that with great respect and know, you know, that these are changes, you know, if we're going to change something, right? It's got to work for people. But also, you know, recognizing that where there's opportunity and sometimes need to try something different. So that's a tough skill as well to balance that.
Yeah, and I think you hit on something that some of our previous speakers hit on as well. You know, that we're constantly working on these skills. That if you feel like you don't have them just yet, it doesn't mean you're not fit for this career, but that we're constantly growing and making sure that we can efficiently and effectively and like you said, responsibly do our jobs. And so, you know, we grow through these skills and we get better at them as well. And I think the way you put your little spiel on teamwork, good advice for everyone for every situation, right? We're all going to have to be able to work with other people, absolutely. And so since you are, you are kind of at the local government level, I wonder if you can speak to a little bit, you know, if someone out there, if a student out there wants to go into government or politics on some level, what's the difference between kind of working at a local level and maybe working at a more national level?
Sure, that's a great question. I can't speak from experience because I haven't, I haven't worked at the national level. But what I do know, right, is that at a local level, things are, right? Things, it's a lot smaller and that means a lot of different things. So that means that things are maybe more personal, that you're living in the community that you're serving. And again, right, like, you know, the president of the United States or someone working, you know, in his staff, right? Might not run into the grocery, like run into people at the grocery store that they have to, you know, that they're like feeling directly responsible to. But it's very personal and especially in a small town and local government, you know, you live in that community and those are the folks. So the folks that you see walking down the street, in the library, at the store, you know, whatever it is, those are, those are the folks that you're responsible to and you're serving. It's also the case, I found for me that like, you know, a public servant, probably this is the case at any level, but it certainly doesn't seem like you can kind of clock out at the end of the day and your job is done and you can just kind of go home and not worry about it. It's, you're kind of always, especially as an elected official, again, if you run into people in public, right, and they've got a concern or they have feedback on something that just happened, right? You're going to hear about it all the time. And so, and that's something that's probably true on all levels, but it's certainly true at a local level, working for local government. Again, if you're in the community that you're, that you're working for, right? It's kind of hard sometimes to make those distinctions. And it's also, you know, at a, at a local level too, there's, there's fewer people, right? It's a smaller operation and so there's fewer people that are pulling the strings and making things happen. And so, so working for, working for a local government means that you might have a lot more, you know, a wider variety of things on your plate that you're dealing with. And, thank you. And people will just bring you food whenever you want to. But so for example, we have, to me, this is a funny example, but we have someone who, a young person, I actually went to college with him. He was a few years behind me and he started working for the city in stormwater management. So he was going to help the city to figure out, you know, how we can prevent flooding and implement some programming around stormwater. Maybe just because he was a young guy, he also eventually got assigned to all of the IT work, all of the technology, like just taking control of all of the city's tech systems. Not really what he was hired to do, but like has taken that on and is self-taught. So in the course of the job, he has taught himself about computers and tech and networks and he's our resident expert now after teaching himself. And so, right, but in it, for a state or a national level, right? That's not going to happen. You're going to be hired to do this kind of like, to maybe do one thing. And it could be great, you know? You can spend all your time and energy on that. At a local level, we're kind of all utility players. You've just got to be able to step up and figure something out when it's needed.
Yeah, I appreciate that explanation and thank you for sharing that. I like that story for sure. If you could, Autumn, can you speak to your kind of pathway journey? How did you get to where you are? And what were some of the maybe steps and choices that you made to get there?
Sure, sure. So I came to Meadville. I will say that, you know, I never, ever in a million years in any amount of lifetime thought that I would do, that I would be an elected official, thought that I would do politics. This is not anything I had, this was no plan that I had for myself by any means. But I stumbled into it because I found a community that I really cared about and was, and am really committed to. And for me, that community was Meadville, Pennsylvania. I came here to go to college almost 10 years ago. Wild. And got involved in the community while I was in college. And then when I came out, when I graduated, came out of college, I started doing community organizing work for a while and that was really about building relationships with people in town, trying to make new initiatives, new projects happen that people envisioned and just kind of building our capacity to kind of do good things and meet people's needs here in this community. I was, I was doing that for a little while and then I got to do it through the redevelopment authority, which is an arm of the city. So some of the work that we had been doing was focused on supporting local business owners, revitalizing our downtown and making things maybe a bit more exciting downtown and drawing people there. And so the redevelopment authority was attracted to that, the city was attracted to that. And so kind of created a position that I was able to step into for a few years before they restructured. The public finances, small town finances right now aren't a very pretty picture. And so there are lots of towns are having to change things around to figure out how they can continue providing the services that they do without raising taxes. And so part of that a few years ago in Meadville meant restructuring and kind of getting rid of the redevelopment authority. So all of us lost our jobs. There's a whole team of us that were laid off in that time. But throughout that, I had, I had been part of a group of people that recognized, you know, that we needed new leadership in our town, that there was just really great potential, really great things were happening in our community and that it was, it was time for new people to step up and new voices to be heard in local decision-making. And so we were already working on, you know, we knew that we would, there were two seats coming open on city council. We knew that we would run people for those seats. We didn't know who they would be. At that time, I had been, I was staff, I was working for the city, so I couldn't do it. I would, I couldn't be elected and be staff. I would have had to quit my job or I just couldn't run. But because I was laid off, I didn't have to do that because they closed our department down. And so I stepped up right around the time that Larry McKnight stepped up, who we met through community organizing, through a series of story gathering that we were doing. He was a bus driver, knew a ton of people, has lived in Meadville his whole life. And we worked with lots of people on a cooperative campaign for city council that was focused on, again, making it easier for folks to get involved and bringing new voices kind of into the fold, into decision-making. And so we ran together, which isn't something that people normally do. So for me, in terms of, you know, what led me to some of the decisions I would have made, like I said, I would never, in a million years, have dreamed that I would go into politics or be an elected official or seek that out. And so for me, having a really large and strong support system that was behind us, right? We were doing this together and it wasn't about Larry and it wasn't about me, right? We were part of something bigger. And folks were committed and they showed up and they worked really hard, even though they weren't the ones running for office. And so being surrounded by that and supported by that helped me make that decision too. I wouldn't, I wouldn't have done it without, without all of that support.
Yeah, and thanks for sharing your story. Obviously, I know a little bit of it, but I think it's a really important one to hear. And I think for a lot of people out there, you know, hearing that never in a million years, right? This was not your pathway, this was not what you thought, but you felt called to do it. You were right place, right time, passion was there. So I think sometimes those stories, they're important to hear, that you might not know what it is you want to do, but sometimes it finds you, right? And it found you. So you mentioned how Larry was, is a bus driver. Can you speak to, so you sit on a council with five different members. Are your backgrounds all the same or are they different? And we get a lot of questions about requirements. So is it really required to have a certain background for you to do what you do?
No, not at all. The requirement is that you get elected. So to be on council or to be an elected official. And so there are certain requirements within that process. You need to have lived, at least in Crawford County, you need to have lived in the community. So I needed to have lived in Meadville for a year, you know, at least a year prior to being sworn in. If you're going to run through one of the, one of the two primary political parties, you need to have so many signatures on a petition to get on the ballot for the primary. You need to win the primary election, which happens in the spring. And that's, you know, a race against other people in your party, in the same political party. And then you'd move to the general election in November if you win that race. And that's when you're competing against folks, winners from the other party. And so, so like in terms of the election, right? It kind of has its own weeding out process, you know? There are requirements that you have to follow. But in terms of people who can serve, it's very, very, it's open. Anybody can serve and that's, and that's for good reason, right? You know, elected officials or representatives, they should represent the community that they're in. And so you don't need to have any formal schooling or any formal training. You know, we've got, I think a pretty wide array. I'm the youngest on our council right now by a decent amount. I don't think that everyone on, who's on city council with me right now has gone to college. Several of them own their own businesses. One's a Realtor, Larry's a bus driver. I am a consultant for something else. I do co-op development and I'm a community organizer. So we all have a different, very different backgrounds, which I think is helpful again in like making decisions and having to work together and represent all of Meadville. We kind of represent a wide variety. You got to be over 18, I think. And I don't think you can have a felony to serve in PA. So there, I mean, but the, but in terms of requirement and training and schooling, there's not, there's not a lot that you need. There's, there are certain things, if you're going to be staff, right? A lot of staff will have a college degree. There are public administration degrees and programs. So some of the staff, like city manager or heads of different departments. Obviously, our head of, you know, head of our finance department, you know, knows accounting and has a background in that. So there's, I mean, there's lots of folks that have different expertise and backgrounds working for the city as well.
Yeah, that's, that's awesome. And I love that, you know, you come from all different backgrounds, all different trainings and, you know, that that's important and valued and that's how you represent the whole of Meadville and not just one faction. So I appreciate that. A question for you, can you talk about your favorite part of being on council? And then your least favorite part? What's the best and the worst of it?
Yeah, I think, well, I've only, I should say, I've only been on since January of this year. And this has been a tough year to start something like this. This is a, you know, everything's changing. My, my favorite part is getting to see some of the changes that we're trying to implement with really heavy community input and involvement. Seeing that happen and come to light. We just went through a brand-new process that we just implemented, a new policy for folks who can volunteer for the city and filling those volunteer positions that for a long time were open and it was tough to fill. But we worked really hard to craft with citizens, to craft a policy for filling those positions. And now they're, they're all filled up with like really amazing and energetic and very inspiring people from all over Meadville, again, with different backgrounds. And so, but that was something we worked really hard on with people for a while. And so to see it happening and playing out and working well, that's the best part. The worst part is, you know, I'm a people pleaser. I like when people like me, I don't like when people don't like me. And so, you know, sometimes we got to make decisions where people don't like us and they don't like the decisions that we made. You know, not the worst of it, but this year, we trick-or-treated on Halloween as opposed to the Thursday before. That was a big deal. And I was just confronted about it this morning outside of the polls. It's, it is, it is fine, but it's what you got to do, you know? If you believe in what you're voting for and trying to move forward and you've talked to people and feel, you know, solid in the stance that you're taking, it's part of the, part of the job, but I don't like it.
Sure, I don't think anyone would like it, right? All right, so we are approaching our 30-minute mark. So Autumn, I'm going to leave you with the last question that we've left with all of our speakers. If you could give one piece of advice to our seniors, upperclassmen out there who are starting to make these decisions and figure out what comes next and just navigate all of that, what would your piece of advice to them be?
I'm not going to limit it to one. I think that I would give a few pieces. So obviously, like from my experience, this is not what I thought that I would do. Even my day job, not anything that I thought that I would ever do. And I've just been really fortunate that opportunities have opened up and I've been able to take them and just kind of come, have been able to take opportunities as they've, as they've come at me. And I think that, you know, in my experience, it's, I've been lucky enough that when I put myself out there and am involved in things and am working hard and getting to know people, that that kind of happens, right? That, you know, folks will make a job for you or will, you know, or you might at least have a good recommend, reference, you know, for something else. And so just, you know, showing up and kind of putting yourself out there and working hard, you know, all along the way, you know, will often, you know, will, at least in my experience, has been really beneficial. The other piece that I'll give too, in particular, if anybody's, you know, interested in local government or any level of government or public service, like it is not too early for you to be, to be involved and to be informed. And if it's something that interests you, you know, there's, there's plenty of ways that young people, even if you, you can't vote yet or you might not be able to formally serve on a committee, right? I think that, you know, we've been able to find ways to really bring young people into some of the work that we're doing and decisions that we're trying to make. And so I definitely encourage folks to find ways that they can get involved now, you know? And again, those doors will open up, you know, as you move through the world because you never know what's going to happen. It could be a pandemic and then everything is different, you know? But you never know and it's okay. But you never know, and it's okay. And so don't, you know, if you don't know, that's okay. It's fine, it'll be okay.
Yes, solid, solid advice, and I appreciate you sharing all of those facets of that. And that it is okay, and that's, you know, what we're kind of hoping to do through a lot of these presentations, that we want to help you figure it out and that you will figure it out. So a big thank you to Autumn again. Thank you for joining us and spending a half hour with us. We really appreciate you taking time to answer questions. And thank you to everyone out there who joined us today. Just as our always, always reminder, keep an eye on our website. That's where you can find all of our links for everything that's upcoming. We've got a bunch of these over the next couple of weeks. So we hope to see you with us in the future. Autumn, thank you again.
Thank you.
And I hope everyone has a good rest of their day.